...the order. Go ahead and do roll call. Leon Locke.
Here.
Lee Booker.
Here.
Tom Wazlowski. Reba Murphy.
Here.
And myself, here. Section B, hearing of persons having business for the commission. I guess we need to discuss what we're here for on this plateline, I guess.
Well, so the hearing of persons is if anybody has happened that's not on the agenda, has something. So if anybody in the crowd has something they want to make it for the planning commission, then it's the planning commission. Wait, if they have three minutes, you know, to talk about that.
Is there anything to be presented?
Does anybody have anything that they have that's not on the agenda?
We don't see any agenda.
The agenda is just the plat, we're already talking about.
You have a question about?
Well, this is the first thing we've even heard about it was this week. And that's what we're wondering, you know, we've already had the deal with the subdivision, want to put it in. We just want to make sure there's not another subdivision being planned for right behind us.
No, no, yeah, we'll talk about more, but, yeah.
And you, you had asked about zoning, and it's...
Now, that is commercial on that road.
It's commercial, it's commercial.
Because I own the property right, right past there.
Yeah, C four, but we'll talk more about that then.
But it is part of Kimber's subdivision.
I don't want to hear that. I thought we were going to get the deed.
It is.
It is. We've got, we've got the paperwork on it, so, so lock Kimber and blatted that out. And all the Kimber's.
Restrictions.
Sold it to Gary Goodman. And Gary sold it to you.
And Earlman.
Two boys.
Gary sell the property to you.
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah.
But you got it.
So, yeah, it sounds like we don't have to.
Restrictions in it.
Restrictions.
Reports of officers, committees, staff.
They done it commercial years ago.
They did what?
They made it commercial property years ago.
But the restrictions about, referred to that.
I can't hit more restrictions.
No, we just need section C, just approved.
And you said, did you say you all looked that up and it was?
Yes, go through that.
They own the agenda.
Go ahead, sir. Yeah. The approval of the minutes from previous meeting, I guess everybody's reviewed those.
I'm making that motion.
I'll say. Call or favor, vote up. Motion carried. Report of officers, committees, and staff.
I do not have, I don't have anything right now.
Have any old business? And the new business is this piece of property that we need to discuss that question.
So, so if you look at it, I think there's something that you guys have to do. Basically, what I understand from Mr. Smith is doing is there are currently four parcels. Four different parcels on this plat. What he is doing is he's creating a new property line on the, towards the south side, C one, two. He's creating a new property line there. And then he is abandoning all the property lines elsewhere. So essentially, he's making what's currently four different parcels. Property, but they're all separate parcels, and making them into two parcels. So you have lot one and lot two. So lot two is going to be 0.85 acres and has two existing buildings on it. And then lot one is going to be 4.2 acres and it has the existing buildings on it.
So, was that zone C one or?
So the front portion is zone C four. There's a portion, the back portion, right here is R one.
Yes, okay. What is going to be C one?
It's C four or R one? It's going to stay whatever the zoning is currently, unless they ever got these up. It's currently C four, the front, R one, the back.
Okay. When does the planning commission rezone it to C four?
I have no idea, I have no records of that.
See method?
Nineteen ninety-two, I'd say.
So how, how can you rezone if you want to take the property line down?
Yeah, probably won't exist.
Okay, so how do you go from C four, R one?
It's not going to be C four, there's currently.
They're going to stay just like they are.
Yeah, they're going to stay what they are.
It is going to be two different pieces of property. Nothing's changing except for the properties they sell.
So the front portions of this property that's facing the street is currently C four. For whatever reason, there's a small portion in the back that's R one. I don't know why.
It's residential.
Yeah, from right here, like there's R one halfway down. Well, so this portion right here, so let's flip it this way. This is C four, this is R one, basically our, the approximation of what we have on our zoning.
That's, that label.
That's what it is.
Oh, if we rezone it.
We're not rezoning it.
We have rezoned it. If you divide the properties, yes, it's legal.
Okay.
Properties will stay identical, the same and zoned.
What I would say is he also is doing something that's probably better anyway, because currently, if you look at it, he's got two property lines that go through the building, existing building. He's abandoning those property lines, which means it's going to be compliant with the setback requirements versus what it now is. It's not even in compliance. Again, as a grandfather, would everyone say, I don't know when this building was banned, or why it's on a property line, or why it was allowed. But that's what it is currently, it can't place legislation to pass.
That in the past, Steve probably corrected it from wrong. I grew up on that piece of dirt down at Shepherd's Horses. That was a red clay bank right there before, but no house, and what was the lady's name that lived in the little house? Just?
I don't remember.
I can't remember her name, I ate breakfasts and sausage and biscuit, yes. Her grandkids would come down there and play with it and stuff, but.
The state got, the state got dirt out there to fill it with the old vice.
Yeah. So that right there was, that wasn't nothing but a red clay bank to start with, so.
So, going from four to two, where's a new property line now? So this will be a new property line right here, and then all the other property lines are being abandoned. So currently, there's a property, the property for here goes all the way to here, on this building right here. There's a property here, there's a property here, there's a property here. All these property lines are being abandoned, so.
So it stays, stay four and R one?
So yeah, front portion is C four, the back portion is R one, okay? There's, sometimes you'll have that in different, you know, I don't know the reason why these were made that way. Sometimes it's just, you know, the maps were made a certain way and they didn't take into account all where all the property lines were. Because, and my guess is probably, because I believe these two are R one, this, this portion has C four and R one. I don't know the reason why this was done, you know?
So therefore, okay, the deed restrictions, if we do, do away with the lot lines, is it go back to this?
Well, the deed restrictions apply to any properties that are on there, but that's a civil matter. That's, he's, just because he abandoned the lot lines, the property is still going to be linked to that previous.
Restrictions.
Yeah, any restrictions that are on there is going to be linked to a previous deed. It doesn't change just because, because if you look at it, if you go on Tennessee Property, you go on anywhere, it'll list all the deeds that previously are associated with the property. So it's, the deed doesn't just suddenly change, this property wants to change, okay?
So you won't make the sign of that deed?
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, so, and I'll explain further on, is that there is a mechanism in place where if you're making.
I don't have.
What's that?
I don't have that.
That wasn't the agenda.
Okay, what you, that paperwork that's in behind that.
I think you only printed off the first few pages.
Hold on, hold on. What you have, the information right there is from the last meeting, because it's attached to those minutes. That's, what you have there is last minute, last meeting. He had, this was on the package.
Do you want this?
There you go.
This is the person just talking about, this is in the subdivision regulations where it says for divisions of land into no more than two lots, does not require the construction, installation of new streets, utilities, or other improvements. Approval may be endorsed in writing on the plat by the secretary of the planning commission without the approval of the planning commission, providing that upon review and certification by planning staff of the planning commission, the subdivision complies with subdivision regulations. So basically, as long as they, you know, it's no more than two lots, which again, means it's not a major subdivision. It's just a simple land split. And they don't, they're not putting in any type of new construction, any type of new utilities. They don't need a variance, they don't need anything. Then it can be done via staff approval. So the idea is, let's say somebody just wants to be able to, they have a piece of property, farm, like, or whatever. They want to split off some for their, their child, you know, a boy or a girl for their child, you know? And they're doing, they've gotten a survey, and it's the day after the planning commission. So instead of making them wait all the way to the next planning commission, they can make sure that everything applies and get signed in a week or two. That way, it's, it prevents, it allows that.
So what, what did we do last month?
That was to set the plat.
That was set.
That had nothing to do with this plat.
Across the street, that didn't have anything to do with that.
Oh, we were moving on.
That, that was a different, that, yeah.
That, that was.
That created a new one. You guys had to come before planning commission because they were asking for a variance, except for. But that had nothing to do with this plate.
That was, that was the same.
That was what I put into the agenda, I don't know what you guys.
So, yeah, what we, what we did was that was the part that, where the house is on. That's the one we looked at last week. This one is across the street.
Yeah, I got that.
The one that we looked at last week, we were dividing that up into the house and the property behind the house, between the house.
And we did the same thing here.
No. Well, this was, it was between, that, well, the, the property behind the house couldn't have a sewer. Couldn't have sewer or septic tank because it was, it was too low. So, so that was why we had to vote on that, because it's not really a buildable lot, because you couldn't have septic tank or sewer. Does that make sense?
No.
Yes, okay.
And this one, where that's not an issue with, with this, with this piece of property.
What, can you please explain to Steve Smith, do what?
The discussion last month was property on the right-hand side of history. Own down the road from this property.
Yeah, I get that.
And there's a house on one section that he wanted it, leaving off from the other property. Now, there was question about what they was going to do with the other property. That was the big hoopla. What are they going to do with it? And that's when the question was brought up about sewage. If they attempted to build on that, then that would step into the sewage process. But here's the key thing, the sewage line is on the other side of the creek from that property. I'm not mistaken, so that's irrelevant to this. This property is on the left-hand side of history. It's already established, it's already got buildings on it.
I get, I get that. So, but I, I, last month, I asked a question, why are we here?
Because you had to, again, you had to do it because it didn't meet all the regulations. It could not have septic or sewage in it versus.
Just septic.
Yeah, we did.
We discussed septic because the thing about septic was, we questioned whether, some people questioned whether they're going to be able to build a house on it and put trailers on it. Those of you that hear last month, remember that question?
Yeah, I think it was, but wasn't it in regards to rezoning it? Because really and truly, there's nothing that can be done with that, and it was brought up. That in that back section, we can do whatever, but.
But it had to be rezoned.
It had to be rezoned.
Yes.
And I think that's where the confusion, that's where the discussion of the septic came up, because somebody said, well, you couldn't do anything with it, because it could never have a sewer, or it could never have a septic or sewer or whatever.
Because T D can sign off.
Exactly, so, that was that discussion.
Yeah, this is a whole different topic.
So you could probably make them have city sewer, but the thing is, I mean, it's still not going to, you'd have to have, do so much work to have it work.
So therefore, you're saying that you have the right to approve this plat?
I said, the, the regulations allow me to look at the plat, make sure that it does not violate any regulations. That it conforms to all the regulations, as long as it is two lots or less. It doesn't require any utilities, it doesn't require a variance, it doesn't do anything that would violate subdivision regulations of the zoning ordinance. It can be approved via staff approval in a, in a faster process.
I, I, that's great. I think the issue go before the planning commission. Okay, we all here.
So you have the issue with the plat is being structured.
If you want to make a sign, I'm okay with it. That's all it is.
Yep.
As long as it goes before the planning commission.
So that, then before, I'm, let's go through this plat and I'll discuss more on that, because then that makes the question of whether this section should even be in if, if there is. We'll go, let's go ahead and go through this plat. You guys on that? Yeah, but basically going back to the plat, you know, it conforms to all the regulations, subdivision regulations. In fact, I would argue, it's probably making, rectifying a lot of issues that I already see with it, because of the property lines going through a building. That's, this is going to prevent it in the future from, if you want to expand things, if you want to make, you know, increase a building, it's not going to be a setback violation, because it would now conform setbacks.
We have a copy of the original deed from Mr. Kimber. And it does have restrictions of everything has to be registered down.
And that's, yeah, that's a civil matter, we can't, yeah, we can't regulate the plat. Well, I thought even, yeah, it doesn't have to be the plat, but yes, I understand, I understand. And if they do any, whoever is doing construction on that, they're going to have to conform with the restrictions that are on there. But that's the city can enforce.
But I understand his deed didn't have restrictions in it, somebody left him off.
For this property?
Which was illegal.
I, I.
Well, if they, it, it, it's kind of like other things that we've talked about. If they didn't put, if Mr. Kimber didn't put restrictions. He did, and we got it.
Let's say, bear with me.
When it was sold to Steve, it should have had those restrictions in it.
But I have a question, if it's, property is rezoned.
It's still the same property.
For residential, do those deed restrictions still apply?
So deed restrictions are a civil requirement, so just because you zone something to be allowed to be used for something, if there's a deed restriction that prevents it, that carries more weight than zoning. So let's say you zoned it to be allowed to be a bank, but in their deed restrictions, they say, this property can never be used for a bank or any similar institution, then that deed restriction would apply. We couldn't enforce, the city cannot enforce civil restrictions, but that could be, you could, the, 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 the property owners could, you know, apply for lien on that property, or sue, say that you have to conform to these deed restrictions.
They have to go to, that, that'd be a court process, not a city process.
Yes.
That's, that's.
But that's the thing, so zoning grants, unless there's something else in, you know, that restricts it. Again, all this plat is doing is removing the property lines. It's not saying anything about what's being put in there, it's not putting in, this plat is subdivision property. It doesn't have anything to do with what is being built on the property.
So, how old we had that box?
Seventy-two.
Yeah, it's been ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Thirty-seven years sometime.
But if the state was made with seller to Steve.
Not need to.
They did not put the restrictions in there, which is a legal matter. Can I, you cannot write a deed that's called restrictions. The city lawyer attorney told us that in the meeting, here forever.
So, so I guess, the thing, thing we're discussing is whether this plat, whether you guys want to motion the two of us.
I might motion.
Oh, I wrote up. I have a motion carried. Actually, let's go back for a moment, because the reason why I'll say that is, I think because of these issues, there are no utilities signature signs. So I would ask that you guys, the motion's subject to all the utilities sign. I don't anticipate issues because there's existing front building there, so there shouldn't have all the utilities will sign off on it, because of all they have is just utilities.
I'd like to make a motion that we have all existing utilities to.
Well, yeah, subject to signing by all.
To be signed by all utilities.
I'm saying. Tom, better roll up?
Aye.
Motion carried. So you said you don't sign this tonight, all the utilities have to sign off, and once they sign off, you don't sign it.
Would you have any other business?
The only other thing that I have is the staff approved plat regulations, and that was what I was talking about, where it's two lots or less, there's no. I guess the question is, you know, is your position leave that you won't sign off on the plat? And so that's the question, if that is the position, please, secretary, go. I guess the question becomes, do you want to remain this, or what is the stance of the planning commission to future on this? I think it becomes somewhat difficult if we have it in the regulations, but your secretary won't sign off on it, and a property owner says.
I won't, yeah, no. I'm saying it needs to go before the planning.
Which we did just vote on it, you know?
Yeah.
So you're saying we're signing it, right.
No, but I'm saying in the future, because future plats can, somebody can do, you know, they're going to look at this section and say, I can do this, but you won't sign off on it.
Yeah, that's correct. It has to go before the planning.
So would that take, would that take a new ordinance to remove the verbiage?
It would have to be moved, yeah, we need that to move, because a property owner, if, if they're saying, I have to wait a month, or have to wait two months, because there's no form. What is, what is a problem?
It go, the information going before the planning.
What I'm saying, it's, it's currently allowed, it's actually allowed, basically, because all municipalities have this type of language in it, because it allows people to be able to do it. So for situations where the planning commission might not be for a month or two, a property owner wants to sell that property, continue to sell, you know, they're trying to do that. It helps speed up the process, is, that was the intention, state law for the duty.
It's for speaking.
But I'm saying, if we're not going to be doing that, you're not going to sign off on it, then we either have to remove that section. Or, or, well, really, it's move it, if secretary is unwilling to sign off on it.
I have a question around that, just because I want to understand, so are we saying that if we remove the language, this situation, I'm going to use Steve, I'm sorry, I'm using you an example. Then Steve wouldn't have had to come before the planning commission?
For this.
For this. The, the current law, the current ordinance, gives the staff, which in this case is Jonathan, if it meets all those checkpoints, which this deed, or this plat did, then he could sign off on that and it didn't have to come before the planning commission. But Lee requested it to become, because he had questions about it, which is fine. Yeah. But moving forward, I think Jonathan's question is, since the language is in there, that if it meets all that criteria, that it doesn't have to come before the planning commission. If we run into this again, and Lee prefers to come before the planning commission, then we really need to update our city ordinances to remove that out to where that that is not allowed. Because right now, it's allowed. And so that's what this planning commission is going to have to decide, whether they want to move forward with that language out, or remain to have it in.
Yeah, and then, well, the thing too is, you could have a problem, your secretary could be in the hospital. I mean, you know, you could, you can have something and then, like that.
Is there like a backup plan for this? Like, so if, if Lee's out, is there a next in line?
So the next in line would be typically, you have the chairman sign it, or the mayor, somebody.
So it's not necessarily blocked? I mean, and we do, there's planning commissions every month.
I would say like the, so let's, I guess the scenario, a lot of times, whenever somebody's trying to do a plat in this way, is that they, you know, it, it's so to save time, to save time, to be able to, be able to get, if they meet, like, let's say you have five acres, you want to divide in two acres and three acres, you meet all the regulations, you know, and, but you submitted it tomorrow. That means you have to wait all the way until.
Till the next meeting.
Next month, to be able to do that.
And it's your property, but you have to get an okay from you to do that. To the planning.
Well, it's because that's under five acres. If it was over, if both lots were over five acres, state law allows you to do the deed, but you have to do it in the plat. And they allow it where you, again, to help speed up the process, because understanding, let's say like a place like Chattanooga or other bigger cities, if you had all the people in, they split lots every day, or every week, you would have hundreds of plats, which is, is just being able to do it quickly. That's the idea behind it, is that these are, so to save time for both developer and physical resources with the city, if they have to do it.
So what has to happen, like, say, it doesn't have to come in front of the planning commission, what is the process?
So what I do is I go, I've got the subdivision regulations, the zoning ordinance, and I look at all those regulations and make sure it adheres to all the regulations. And so, and I always look at what's the biggest red flags. Are they putting in new utilities? Are they putting in any new room? Are they requiring a variance? Are they doing anything that would circumvent the regulations? And because it's usually two lots, they, well, it's not usually, it is two lots or less, it's not, it's never going to be a major subdivision, it's only two lots.
So like, and I'm going to bring back up last month's, last month's stuff. So had that been a situation where we didn't bring it in front of the planning commission? How would, because I mean, I think there was stuff brought up in that meeting that would not have been known, had it not come up in front of the planning commission. That one was not, they was not allowed to go there, because he had, he had to.
Again, I waited and reviewed that, I told them, you know, you've got to be able to get septic on this, you have to get sewer. If you can't do that, I'm sending you to planning commission, because you can't meet all the regulations.
But is there ever a process, or could there potentially be a process where there are unknowns? And you wouldn't know unless it came through, because I'm sorry, there's still too much that's not black and white.
If you, if you looking as far as, city is tighter, county is loose. There's a backdoor explanation on that, but you talking about selling property and structure being built on it?
Well, it's because in the county, it's also.
They, they have no zoning, so, city, you don't really have to worry about. Now county, it's, there's no zoning. Just take the, nice flight right over to the great gray county and much building is going on, there shouldn't be no tax increase for the next, maybe day.
I just look, I mean, I think that, I think that's what this committee does, is they, they look and view.
And that is, so, what I'm saying is, I, I don't have a problem with that, to say that we would need to look to remove that section. Because if you're a property owner, you're saying, you know, if this is endless something else, like, then where are my personal property rights? Why do I have to wait for you guys to come to a meeting? This regulation says, I can do it next week, if I meet all the regulations. Here's a question, okay? How, how, how often does this come up? That's the other thing, if they, it doesn't really come up that often, so that may be the calculations, if it doesn't come up that often, then maybe we should remove it. You know, planning commission should be. There's not many places left in Springfield, I would say you could even do a major subdivision, you know, because those slots are not big enough to do that. So it's gonna be smaller lots, really, even within smaller lots, I don't think you're gonna have a ton of it. I mean, this is even not really even split, sometimes, because who's abiding as property owner.
You said it had, you looked at it to see if it, by city and subdivision regulations. Okay, what deed did you look at, just Steve's, or did you research?
See, I don't usually look at deeds unless there is an issue brought up, because again, like, we can't enforce deed restrictions. We can't enforce that, that, I can't really even be taking the calculation, unless we're knowingly violating, if, for some reason, a deed restriction says you can't divide the property. But I've never seen, that's very rare, I don't know many deed restrictions that say you can't ever even divide your property.
That, 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 that's the reason why the bill inspector's supposed to be here.
Who's the building inspector?
But if that's something that you guys, again.
Well, how can we make sure when he sells, if it has that clause in there of the restriction?
I don't, I can't really say in terms of the deed restrictions, because that doesn't, anything I deal with, I don't deal with deed restrictions, because they're civil, they're, it's not a planning or zoning, because we cannot enforce civil restrictions, that's just.
So now does the city enforce any, who enforces them then, if you're Howard?
Yeah.
That's why, that was the court.
So whoever has a vested interest in that, so, you know, whoever is part of the Kemmerhill subdivision, if that's in your deed restrictions, you have a vested interest, and you would be bringing that before court. The city cannot enforce, because that is, that is restrictions that are made between a property owner, you know, two residents with each other. As, the city is not the one enforcing, the city didn't make those restrictions for them, the city can't enforce, like, they didn't make.
Well, how do you go about when it's illegal to leave it out?
That's, you're not to go against that, and tell, and say that I have to put it into, because it was a previous restriction, that was a previous deed, that's still linked to that property. But that's, the city cannot do that, because, again, it's not, they have, we have no force power over that. That's all I.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Commission board needs to think about where we have had a slight error. We need to elect a chairman. We can definitely. Planning commission, sure staff should do it, if you look to it. We don't have a chairman, when I became mayor, they kicked me out of the seat. Look at me, I, y'all wouldn't throw me here, I'm a volunteer. I, I got slickered into being the chairman, I'm not getting slickered back. Wait, wait, we got the old board, that's something I wanted to think about, trying to decide what we want, because we hadn't had an election in the room, we're supposed to have a yearly election, we can't hook up.
We did have elections, we just couldn't.
Couldn't get a chairman.
Just because.
Sure, snap.
And based off of that thing, the mayor can serve as chairman, Jeremy's already vice, Lee's already secretary, there's only two of them left, since he was told.
Buying coffee, it's all I can.
Oh lord, he's not here, he just by default?
No, I like to be paraball, and keep paying off, I just told you, you need to buy a coffee or breakfast, one or the other. Yeah, that's what happened, give him opportunity to say, how about you back?
What is the typical count for commissioners on planning and zoning work? Because it seems like we just don't have, I mean, actually. So you can, you guys have five, and I just believe municipalities have anywhere between five and nine. I would have to double check, but they, they all has, they, they have regulations in terms of how many, the minimum amount and the maximum amount. You know, counties have like nine to fifteen, I think Mary County has fifteen planning commissioners, if you wanna say, that's a lot. Second town has nine.
I can see these guys.
Yeah.
If you have a bigger nation, do you have to have a bigger core?
Yes, so you have to have a majority, yeah.
That's it.
So, yeah, so if you have seven, you have to have four, you have nine.
Yeah, so that, that might be.
Prose and pop.
Jarryl, the city commissioner.
And that, so some, that may be something in consideration, you, you know, find too, I, smaller town, it can be difficult. Come consistently in a smaller town, and I know I have a lot of municipalities I've worked with, planning commissioners have been there for decades, because nobody else wants to deal with them. Nobody else wants to take time on Tuesday or Thursday.
And that's a non-paying job, no wonder they won't take it.
Well, and sometimes too, the bigger the group, the harder it is to get people to show up, I don't know why that is, but.
Probably expecting somebody else to step up.
Yeah, exactly, they're thinking, well, somebody, so they'll all be there.
Well, that's all I. We good?
We good. Make a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion for adjournment. All favor of that?
Ah.
Thank you, chairman. Thirty-eight.
It's got to be city.
You cooking all morning? No, travel off.